So to everyone joining, thank you very much. Appreciate you taking time on a Friday evening. I know that this isn't a normal Friday evening for most of us. And I think it's important to acknowledge on the front end, just how unprecedented a time this is in all of our living memory and in living memory of our country in a lot of ways. And so I hope that your family is experiencing health. And if not, they're experiencing recovery. And I hope that the economic security that you find in this time lasts and people can find peace and gratitude in their lives. So with that, we want to get started. Tonight, we wanted to have a dialogue about kind of density at large. How is the city changing? What's happening in terms of affordability? What are some of the tools and levers we can pull? As well as look at a couple of options that the city has been investigating for some time now over the course of the last couple of decades and some immediate opportunities for advocacy if your spirit moves you. For the format, it's going to be about 40 minutes of giving you some information and perspective. And then we're going to collect questions through the chat feature here. Or if you want to post comments in the YMB page of Facebook, which is probably how a lot of people got here. Kirk is going to read those questions. And we're going to take them at the end and try to leave about 20 minutes for those questions moderated by Kirk. So by way of introduction tonight, the two hosts are going to be myself, Zach Ackerman and Lisa Sauvay from the Planning Commission, one of my colleagues as well. So we're going to start with a little bit of introduction. And there are about eight questions that we want to try to answer for folks throughout the course of this conversation. Please, if you're a member of Ann Arbor City Council or the Ann Arbor Planning Commission, I would ask that you just be aware of the Open Meetings Act. It only looks like we have Kathy so far. Kathy Griswold, so thanks for joining us. If more folks join, I would ask that those members of City Council don't use the chat feature. But if it's just you, Kathy, feel free. You will be more than kosher with respect to the Open Meetings Act. So awesome. With that, I'll just kind of state who I am. I'm Zach Ackerman. I represent the Third Ward on Ann Arbor City Council. The Third Ward is Ann Arbor's southeast side of town. So to the north, that would be Washtenaw Avenue is the major northern boundary. And then to the west, that would be Packard and Stone School, going all the way out to Pittsfield Township to the east and south. The one little sliver of downtown that I represent is the south side of South University. But other than that, mostly very residential and parkland. So I'll turn it over now to Lisa to introduce herself as well.
Hi all. I'm Lisa Sauvay, Planning Commissioner. I don't represent anything in geographic bounding box per se in the same kind of regard, but I live in the Fifth Ward. I have a small architecture studio. And so outside of Planning Commission, I think a lot of my experience is actually a lot more in the commercial sector with local and small businesses and kind of adaptive reuse. So joining Planning Commission, a lot of my experience has even been raising issue with how we use the buildings and how local businesses can and how those issues haven't been brought to light because certain zoning restrictions restricted those things prior to even kind of asking for permission. So those are the kind of issues that, you know, I've seen. And I'm trying to do the best work I can to help the local spirit.
Awesome. So I think it's really important when we're talking about any topics of growth, of density, of housing, it's important to kind of talk about what values sit underneath them. So I just kind of want to give you some perspective on where I come from and how I came to form the values and perspectives that I do have. So I grew up here in Ann Arbor. I grew up in the Third Ward. I'm a proud product of the Ann Arbor Public Schools and University of Michigan. And as I was going through the public schools here, you know, apart from fantastic teachers and coaches, I think what made the biggest impact on me was having a diverse set of peers, diverse set of classmates, a diverse set of friends who helped me grow up with perspectives that weren't my own, that didn't come to me through my family. And that provided me a much broader worldview, much richer childhood. And I think a much sounder foundation of what it is to be an American and an American in Michigan and in Ann Arbor in particular. I think for a lot of people who grew up here and spent their, have spent their lives working here, that reality is becoming more and more fleeting. It becomes harder every year as the cost of living increases. And so when I ran for office in 2015 and then again for reelection in 2017, my priorities were pretty straightforward. They were focused on infrastructure. So your roads, your pipes underneath the streets, your bridges, and basic services. Make sure your trash and recycling gets picked up on time every time. Make sure that your public safety services are healthy and well-funded so that when you call 911, you can get the help you need. And then affordable housing. You know, in the last five years, I've served on City Council. I've been the only renter on City Council. The rest of the body are homeowners. And I think when you consider the fact that 51% of Ann Arbor's residents, and that's including children, college students, and working adults, not to mention retirees, that's 51% as a majority. And you know, I'm one of 11. And so I think that's a perspective that's needed in the conversation and a fantastic opportunity to increase the dialogue there. And so we've made progress on those priorities, right? New roads plan that provides more dedicated funding being spent smarter. We've stabilized our leadership in our police and fire departments, all good stuff. And we're going to, you know, modernize our water treatment facility. Fantastic. When it comes to housing and building more affordable housing, I think it remains in a lot of ways still an uphill battle. And that's not to say we haven't made progress. We have, you know, we've renovated all of our affordable housing units, all of our publicly owned affordable housing units. And that's awesome. That was a $49 million project in partnership with private investors and federal government. But if you look at where rents are going in Ann Arbor and you look at the price of homes for sale, you can tell that we're still fighting upstream. And so something needs to give, something needs to shift. We need some kind of more radical change to make a bigger difference. So that's my perspective. Lisa, do you want to share a little bit about your story of how you came here and what got you interested in these topics?
I mean, I've been very fortunate, I think, in where I've kind of landed in Ann Arbor. I mean, starting, I was a grad student and I stuck around. I was a single mom. My daughter was on Medicaid. So I lived in Ypsilanti because that was the most affordable housing that I could find when I was a grad student. And so that's kind of where I started. And I was just fortunate in terms of, you know, how things played out for me. Nothing is just hard work anymore. So I think I see that for other people that, you know, if you don't, if you don't get, strike a little bit of luck, there's got to be some other systems in place that we can look at and figure out how to work on. And again, I think for, for me and a lot of the areas that I work on in the city, they're not residentially focused zones. But there could be, and then I think this is something we might be talking about, the difference between residential use and residential zones. And so thinking about that diversity of use and how those things interplay with other uses in the city and how that diversity kind of strengthens the collective whole in a lot of different ways. And so that's, I think, a lot of when I think about affordability and the sustainability of a city, it's that kind of dynamic play between a lot of different components that I'm really interested in, especially when I see small businesses and seeing a lot of friends right now struggle through it, but a lot of small businesses trying to start up and the barriers to create your own livelihood in the city isn't just about where you live, but it's like how you work and who you employ and the capacity that isn't possible here in Ann Arbor.
Awesome. Thank you, Lisa. And I've seen a lot more people join. So thank you so much. I appreciate you taking time on a Friday evening. I did see a few more members of City Council and the Planning Commission. And just to make sure that we're in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, everyone is welcome to submit questions in the chat function, which we'll take at the end of the conversation. If you're a member of City Council, I would ask that you not or approaching forum, and that could just create the sense that we're trying to deliberate, which is not the purpose of tonight's conversation. So members of the public, please feel free to submit questions. I would just ask my colleagues on council not to. Awesome. So as we move forward, I think the first question we want to try to tackle tonight is how municipal government can help the affordable housing problem here in Ann Arbor? And so, you know, first of all, why should municipal governments focus on housing? In Michigan, cities can't legislate around wage. We can't help increase the revenue that a household brings in. It's just off the table. And so we, but we can help to regulate and legislate around and make impact on reducing cost of living. And if you think about, you know, all the bills that you have, the rent check that you send in, the mortgage check that you send in, the property tax you send in, all of these probably compound to be one of your largest expenses as a household or an individual. And so that means local government, you know, should focus on that as a major priority in improving the quality of life of residents. So unfortunately, in Michigan, you're going to hear a lot of barriers in our way of making a difference in people's quality of lives with respect to housing. You know, two of the most powerful and direct tools that municipal governments across the country leverage and utilize to affect change on affordable housing are actually illegal in the state of Michigan. The first is inclusionary zoning. Inclusionary zoning says, hey developer, you're going to build 100 new units of housing. X% of those have to be affordable to a certain population making a certain. Illegal in Michigan. The next is rent control. Rent control says, hey building, you're built, or I should say, hey landlord, your building was built before year X. That means that your rent inside of your building can only increase at Y% every year. Great way to maintain and stabilize the rent of your already existing housing. Illegal in the state of Michigan. So what does that leave us here in Ann Arbor? Well, there are really kind of three key pillars that municipal government can use to make a meaningful difference in affordable housing. Those three pillars are incentives. We can incentivize developers and landlords to offer lower prices to their tenants. We can direct, the second pillar is we can directly subsidize housing by building it ourselves or offering vouchers. And then the third is increasing housing supply. And the conversation tonight is mostly going to be around that third pillar, the housing supply pillar. And we've made some progress over the years in each of these three pillars. With respect to incentives, Lisa and I on the Planning Commission, we got the opportunity to work together on some regulatory changes that more aggressively ask developers to incorporate affordable housing into new developments in our downtown. With respect to direct subsidy, the Ann Arbor Housing Commission is pursuing the construction of potentially hundreds of units of new subsidized affordable housing on publicly owned land. That's awesome. And then with respect to housing supply, in our downtown, we've densified some. But as we'll discuss as the conversation goes on, believe it or not, that new construction downtown that we've all seen with our eyes and felt with our hearts actually hasn't created a significant amount of supply relative to the new demand that we can cook. And we'll go over some numbers to get into that in more detail. But that's kind of how I wanted to frame some of the conversation around how can government help? What are the tools and why are we focusing on supply of housing density tonight? Lisa, anything you want to add?
I think the one kind of condition of supply, it turns into kind of a one trick pony. But supply and demand as a thing is, I think, contextual. Where we put supply is also just as important. So even with that affordable housing, where we're building units, the location and that diversity, where we're putting supply, I think, is important. And that kind of goes into how we think about zoning districts and connectivity and the kind of infrastructure as well. And so when we talk about how we overlay incentives and how we look at where supply can go, those are the kind of conditions that are also important. More, not just more is more, but where does more actually do better as a priority?
Awesome. Thank you. So I think that begs the next question, which is, why is supply important to affordability? So how can we make that link a little bit clearer for people? Because I know that, just by knocking on doors and growing up in Ann Arbor, that this is, this is an emotional topic. This is an identity topic for the city. And I think it's important to draw that link as clearly as possible. So how does greater supply of housing make housing more affordable? So I'll just say that researchers from the Bush administration to the Obama administration, to Harvard, to MIT, to Berkeley, to the University of Michigan, all say the same thing, that housing supply lowers housing costs long term. There is no academic debate about it, period. But let's break it down a little bit and bring it into the local context. So it's a matter of demand and supply, as Lisa said. I think that's the most important place to start. So right now in Ann Arbor and in urban areas around the country, we're not alone in this whatsoever. Demand for housing is at an all time high. You know, we, as a millennial, you know, our generation is reaching maturity. We're the second largest generation in American history. And baby boomers, the largest generation in American history, are starting to age in place, are starting to retire, are starting to look at fixed incomes. And so this new, you know, generational competition for the same housing, you know, creates a greater amount of demand nationwide. Trends are happening across the country. In Ann Arbor, though, some important numbers to keep in mind is that in the last 15 years, so since about 2005, the University of Michigan has increased its enrollment by 10,000 new students. So that's 10,000 new students who come to campus each year. The next is in the last five years, just the last five years, looking back to 2015, the university has also increased its staffing levels by over 5,000 new employees, not to mention new jobs in biomedical research, in technology, in medicine, in food service, and in auto, with some auto research centers propping up just outside of town. And so at this time, we have more jobs than we have people. So huge new demand, but where is the new supply? Mostly downtown. Mostly downtown is where new construction has been happening. But you may be surprised to know that we've only built just over 6,000 new bedrooms of housing, both between the construction of new dorms like Munger and the private market, in the same time that we've added these 10,000 students, not to mention all the new employees who are here. So what does that, what dynamic does that create? Well, it creates a really important one to understand. I'm going to pull up a graphic now. So it may be difficult to see, and I got to figure out how to be a weatherman because I've never done it before. But this chart shows the boundaries of the city of Ann Arbor. And then this number here, you're going to see that over 80,000 people are commuting into the city to work in Ann Arbor every day. For a city of 120,000 people, that's really, really significant. You'll see that just here in Ann Arbor, there's about 20,000, 25,000 people who live here and work here. And then about 20,000 to 25,000 people also live in Ann Arbor and then commute outside of the community to work. So what's the net? The net is we have more people who drive into the city, driving more miles of roadway during rush hour, putting more water in our roads, and frankly, probably putting a lot more demand on our housing system than the housing system can bear right now at the prices that we have. The next piece I'll say is that there's this, I think people have found it very frustrating that what we see going up is branded as luxury. And I understand that that's frustrating. It's a strong marketing effort on the part of developers. And these things, these new construction is expensive. As more is built, the older apartments are advertising at cheaper prices. So for example, Landmark, which was built in 2014 and is now surrounded by much, much more expensive, much newer apartments, has lowered their prices. So we are seeing some effect on the market. But I'll add that we've seen this dynamic happen since 1967. I want to point here to a 1967 advertisement in the newspaper that's bragging about new luxury apartments on Walnut. I've actually been to this apartment building. I had friends in college who lived here. I would not describe it as luxury today. I would describe it as affordable relative to its location to campus. So as we think long term, as we think about how the next generations of people will inherit our city, it's important to take that long lens, that the construction of what's branded as luxury housing today and is frankly out of reach of a lot of people will house new students, new workers, but it will also over time become more affordable to the people who need it. Cool. Lisa, any, anything that you want to add to this question?
I think, especially kind of just seeing some of the questions come in, I want to make sure that we're also just kind of like balancing the conversation a little bit about the affordability and the kind of topic of the, the kind of conversation here with the transit and a little bit about what we talked about with affordability and those layers of it and some things that we talked about to, with incentives even, and what we can do at the municipal level is how do we make construction and units more affordable? A lot of that, we talk about even the construction of parking, right? And so the construction of parking spaces, as they are tethered to units, increases the cost of those units substantially. And so when we're talking about these transit corridors and talking about multimodal use, a lot of what that does is if we can find ways to successfully build out a system in a city that people can move around within, if they're working and living in the city, we can reduce the construction of parking spots and increase the construction of housing units. And that's the, that's the sweet spot. I think we're trying to find that balance that the cost to developers is going to build places to house people and not housing cars. And that's where getting into those transit oriented development really comes into play relative to making sure the infrastructure supports the housing to reduce the overall cost to those people living in it.
Awesome. Thank, that's, that's great. And I just figured out a new setting on Zoom. So hopefully our heads will be a little bit bigger now. Awesome. So how do the Ann Arbor's current laws support or prevent new supply or a more diverse supply of housing? And I think, Lisa, you're going to be an awesome resource in this area, working with the clients you do. So I just want to quickly show another graphic. And I think it's an important one to understand. And I think it's one that we all kind of know inherently, is how is Ann Arbor zone? We're a city of green, which is the park system. Public parks, either the University of Michigan or city or county, are seen in green here. And then the yellow is single family housing. So that's going to be your typical Ann Arbor classic neighborhood. And that's awesome, right? That's the character for that a lot of us fell in love with. It's the neighborhood that I grew up in. And there's no disputing that that's a wonderful thing. But if we want to be providing housing for different types of people who can't necessarily afford to buy a single family home in Ann Arbor, which on average costs $375,000 a year now, we need to be providing different types of housing. And that's really what this conversation is trying to be about, is how do we increase the diversity of the different types of housing to meet different types of people where they are, where they are in terms of income, where they are in terms of the point of their life that they are in, maybe they're a young professional or they're an empty nester who's trying to downsize. Or maybe they, you know, financially just are in a place that needs to be rented right now. So that's what we're talking about. And if it's, if it's not going to happen in our parks and it's not going to happen in our single family neighborhoods, which are the fabric and mosaic of our community, where can it happen? And that's really where we get to the main topic of tonight's conversation. Lisa, any other experiences you've had with respect to how our zoning code, you know, supports or inhibits creative use of space, either for your clients or your experience in housing for, as Planning Commissioner?
I mean, one thing, you know, I think it touched on earlier, again, when we kind of dive into this, is the difference between residential use versus residential zoning. You know, and there's, there's been, I think, a lot of movement on the single family zoning topic nationally, right? Eliminating it altogether. Is that actually, you know, against single family housing? Or is it just opening up for other types of living situations within those areas, right? So I want to just be cognizant of what residential zoning is versus residential use is. And I think what we're talking about here is residential use in other zoning types as the place that I think provides the most kind of amount of opportunity, again, for that diversity of layering up, walkability to services, access to transportation nodes, connectivity to other neighborhoods and those sorts of things. And so I think as, what we're talking about is seeing what we have as assets in our city. And I think that's, you know, the purpley and brown areas, right? Of core assets, either downtowns or main corridors, and figuring out how we can create tools to use those assets better for, to build up our community and strengthen it. And so I think that's really kind of, at least how I read, what we're talking about is this transportation district, T1 zoning option is, it's a tool. We're not talking about immediately overlaying it and designating it anywhere, but that we have those types of places that this overlay might support with what we already have, I think is what the crux is, should be about the topic here.
Awesome. Cool. Brian, thank you for all of your thought. I, I'm not going to take the time to read it right now, but when we get to the end, I'll be sure to try to address it if it's not clear. Awesome. So the next piece is around, you know, why do transit corridors present so much opportunity? And maybe first, it's important to talk about what are transit corridors? You know, we're, we're a municipal area, or excuse me, a metropolitan area that has a transportation authority. It's about, you know, it's this half of the county with a little bit of service that extends beyond it. In that, that system, we get about 6.6 million rides a year, which is actually pretty active for a community our size. And I think that has a lot to do with the fact that a lot of our workforce lives outside of our community and folks in the city need bus in at a really high rate. I think, so the transit corridors that our master plan, our current master plan specifies are a number. There's, there's the State Street, there's Washtenaw, there's Jackson, there's Plymouth, there's Fuller, there's Stadium. And actually, I don't think Stadium is one. Am I missing any? I don't know if actually that's Packard. In any case, it lists a number.
Like perspective of.
And I think as, as the Planning Commission has been kicking around, you know, where might we want to focus energy on trying to create some more diversity of housing or some more walkable retail space? You know, most of those we haven't considered. We've really focused our interest and our attention, first and foremost, on South State Street and then also on Washtenaw. And I think it's because as you look to South State Street, and that's, that's the one that piques my curiosity and interest the most. As you look to South State Street, you know, you scratch your head a little bit. You see Briarwood Mall and you see a lot of big office buildings with giant parking lots. And if you go there on a Saturday or Sunday, those parking lots are empty. If you go to Briarwood Mall on Monday through Friday in the middle of the day, those parking lots are mostly empty. So at any hour of any day of the week, you can go to that area, which is some of the largest square footage and acreage in the entire city. And most of it's not being used. And when it is, it's for temporary parking. And so I think there's, that presents a lot more opportunity. It presents opportunity for green space that's currently asphalt. And it presents opportunity for people to get to live in our community and take advantage of the benefit of living closer to where they work, to where they spend their time, where they shop, where they eat. And I think that's, that's something that our community can and should offer to people, especially considering the fact that so many people work here but don't get the opportunity to live here. So, you know, I'll just kind of quickly put on the screen two quick maps that our Planning Commission has kind of looked at with respect to the South State Street area. So I think that it'll pique people's curiosity and wonder, if you would.
I've heard just.
Yeah, please.
About what is in the ordinance revision committee about carports and solar panels and something that we're looking at in terms of those large swaths of parking spot spaces came up mainly for car dealerships and those sorts of. came up mainly for car dealerships and those sorts of things. And finding that balance of utilizing carports with solar panels on top to make a sustainability effort. But we also don't want to get that tipping point that we cover all of Briarwood Mall, that it becomes a solar farm that now is generating enough revenue as a solar farm instead of ripe for redevelopment of something other than surface lot where we can create density, right? So there's, there's that balance, but just when you look, show these maps too, it is important to think, okay, how can we find that sweet spot of if we've got this surface area, can we collect, do solar gains and collect energy? But what land use? We don't, we want to make sure that we're not using these lands as their highest and best use just to collect solar gains, which we could, which we could do outside of the core city as well.
Cool. That's creative and exciting. So awesome. Fantastic. So this is the first area. So in, in just to orient you, the white and pink blob on the bottom, that's Briarwood Mall and its associated parking lots. Above would be what you see as kind of the single story doctor's offices. And then you're going to see Eisenhower, the two, the two, or four lane Parkway. And then above that is going to be more office space. So anything you see blue is, is, is the use is generally office space right now. So if you're thinking mentally about that area of town, you, you should be picturing, you know, banks, financial institutions, office buildings and a lot of parking lot, a lot, a lot of parking lot. The other area that the planning commission has really taken an interest in and intrigued in is the other side of State Street. So as you picture this to the, to the left where my head is unseen would be Briarwood Mall. The road cutting the red square in half again is Eisenhower. And then to the bottom, you're going to see Wolverine Tower and, and areas like Broadway. And then above, you're going to see areas like the 777 building and the associated office buildings in, in that area. Again, what you're picturing is two really tall towers surrounded by a lot of parking lot. And then some smaller office buildings, again, surrounded by a lot of asphalt. So these are the two areas that I think have piqued interest of the planning commission the most. We'll get into what are the details of kind of what the next action could be from city council and planning commission. It doesn't go so far as to actually rezone any of this. But just to, to kind of give the, the community some understanding of, of where we might look in the future after a lot of public engagement. This is generally the ideas that we were tossing around. Lisa, anything you want to add to those conversations?
So yes, those areas need a lot of help personally. I'll say like the other areas that I think are just like ripe for work are those Washtenaw Stadium, Packard areas that are in really close proximity to a lot of those neighborhoods, have a lot of core local businesses. But we've got to figure out ways to allow businesses to improve and adapt either their use type and their buildings. And that's kind of a tricky point mainly relative to parking. We basically have two parking districts downtown of no parking and then everywhere else, which is mall scale parking. And there's no middle area that thinks about walkability with those neighborhoods. And so when we talk about transit, we're looking at out at the edge where we've got large parking lots for office buildings like down at Eisenhower. Or we've got downtown where we've got the DDA managing a lot of that and carrying that load. And that middle ground where a lot of our community kind of can meet with local businesses. That's a, that's a, that's a tricky in-between spot that needs a, another kind of solution and dialogue to it as well. So, and, and I think that goes, it's interesting, I'm going to just jump ahead a little bit. We can kind of revert back, but a lot of these questions are kind of technic, you know, maybe not so technical, but as I'm kind of like scanning through and Kirk, you can moderate me out of this. But it's a lot of questions, you know, just about like, how does this process work? Like, do these immediately become districts? How do we work with transportation planning? What's the master planning? What's involved? And like, this is just the first step to create a tool in the toolbox. And basically talking about today, I think, like what, what opportunities do we have and what tools don't we have to build on those? And so this is, this is not kind of about starting resolutions to do the work. It's about building up those tools to then figure out what and where we can do that. You know, work to service what we're talking about here as pain points in the community.
And I think I probably got ahead of myself even just showing those maps. I think that, that's a really important point to reel it back in of like tangibly what, you know, has the planning commission been talking about and changing? And what can city council do to support those conversations? So I think it's really important to stress like those maps I showed you, those aren't necessarily where we're going to do massive rezonings in the future. And I may well not be on council when those decisions are made. But what I think we should do is exactly right is we have a certain number of zoning districts that, that people can use to build. And we should evaluate what those are on a regular basis, figure out what our priorities as a community are. And then make sure the tools, which are the zoning districts we have, line up with what we're trying to accomplish. And I think for, in a large part, that's not the case because outside of downtown, we, it's like Lisa said, it's kind of mall scale parking. It doesn't incentivize affordable housing by any means. And, and a lot of our commercial districts don't require any housing, which is likely what we need more than, than anything. So really great point. And then I think also important to emphasize is the fact that, you know, before any actual rezonings en masse ever did happen, should they ever happen, you know, that is a point for a lot of public dialogue. I think we have had a lot of public discussion over the last decades in the kind of creation of our master plan about these types of things and the creation of those documents which involve public, which involve public engagement. Keep time and time again emphasizing that, hey, South State Street, Washtenaw, these are areas that can probably use more housing and can probably be more walkable and probably be more friendly to bicyclists. And probably better get, you know, buses on and off the, the transit corridor more smoothly. So, so, you know, there's been public dialogue in that. And so I think this step of creating a, a tool that could in the future be an option would be a fantastic next step before it's applied more broadly after much more public discussion in the context of a new master plan as well.
Yeah. And I think I'll just add to that, that we are in the process of starting a new master plan. And so i- it's not that planning commission or city council is trying to apply any new zoning at this time. But we're looking at the pain points, knowing, you know, as citizens of the city, you know, what those pain points are and what tools might be useful for the master planning professionals as they talk to all the stakeholders. Say, here, we have this other thing, would this be a viable option? And play out those scenarios through that process. And the master planning process is discussions with stakeholders, evaluation of what we have, consolidation of the variety of things that conflict each other, and then recommendations. But the master plan recommendations don't actually like become boots on the ground until we start adopting those as ordinances. So it's a long process. And if we postpone creating tools and like getting shovels ready, like it's going to be even further down the road before we actually start reaping the rewards of making these modifications to help build that part of the city. And so it's not that we're jumping ahead of master planning and what the professionals would do. What, what we're trying to do is create as many tools as possible to preemptively prepare a whole kind of lineup for those professionals to do a lot of that work and have more conversations and say, hey, we have this. Should we change it? Should we use it? Should we throw it away? And I think that's the useful thing about talking about T1 now.
That's awesome. No, really, really well said. So we're about to approach the 40 minute mark where we want to more actively take questions that Kirk is going to moderate through the chat function. You know, I, I want to just quickly just explain mechanically kind of what's on the table where and how you can voice your opinion one way or another. Mechanically, the planning commission has reviewed a first draft of what a T1 zoning district could be. And, and that's something that can be applied, like Lisa said, into, in the future. That first draft, you know, I think was great in a lot of ways. I, I think it had, you know, after we had some public dialogue and solicited public input through a public hearing, we saw a couple blind spots that we, we want to fix and tweak and get absolutely right. And I think the public was spot on on a lot of things that were constructive. And then, but before we embark on that and send something back to city council, I think it's important that city council weigh in that this is something that they have the appetite for. So I introduced a resolution to city council, which got postponed until Monday, which will be upcoming on April 6th, in which the, the city council will give affirmative direction to the planning commission to officially take that draft back up, revise it, look at a second draft, have public dialogue about that second draft. You know, make more iterations upon it if necessary. And then present a, a draft of what a new zoning district could be technically and mechanically and on paper. And recommendations for where that could be applied in the future. Again, pending more public dialogue and more master plan guidance. So, so that's mechanically what's next is this Monday, April 6th, city council will vote on a resolution simply giving affirmative direction to planning commission to say, hey, yeah, this is a tool we should have in our toolkit. And please give us your best recommendations based on what you hear from the public. All right. So we only went one minute over. I think that's mostly my fault. Sorry, Lisa. But Kirk, turn it over to you to, to ask questions and bring up thoughts from the audience.
Wonderful. And I, again, thank you for everybody joining. And I see people trickling in over the past 40 minutes. So we really appreciate your taking time to, to join us tonight and keep the questions coming. We'll credit it as many as we can. One of the early ones we got has to do with linking this effort to existing or future transportation modes. In other words, trying to achieve some kind of match with how many people were able to get around the city with the densities that we're allowing. Is that something that's a concern at this point? Or how is that typically handled, talking with AAA TA for example? Or how has that been handled with other developments?
I think we've got the transit plan, we've got, you know, moving forward, the master plan, moving forward. Those are components that that's when stakeholders come together and discuss those and say, how do we leverage? And get these things working in tandem instead of isolation. So I, I think what's happening in this next week is saying, yes, there's an appetite to try to pursue it. And I think through these public hearings and a lot of that, it is trying to get those stakeholders in with what's kind of being proposed and drafted right now as in the toolbox, right? So there's kind of two components to this. One, what do we do with it once we have it? And the one prior to that actually is like, what should we put in it for what we think we might need? And I think that is kind of right now, like what do we need? Do we need things along those kind of single family housing proximity, the stadiums, the Packards, the Plymouth Roads? Or do we need things that are more the, by the mall, you know, and kind of the larger swaths? Or is it a double package deal? Is there a T1, T2 sort of thing? And so I think those are all the dialogues that we have to have. And they're not baked now, but that's part of starting, right? And since there are so many dialogues to have at those different scales, it's worth doing it now so that we've really prepped as ATA and everybody else is really working on those systems to say, how do we tether in as you're doing the planning so we can plan together instead of react, right? And be really proactive about those dialogues together.
Yeah, that's really well said. And then Brian, I think put a finer point on his questions about densities either tied to transit levels or it's not. And I think, I think that's fair. I, I think some of the stipulations that, that will be and can be put on this is around, you know, where is transit today? The other benefit is of the fact that we don't have fixed rail transit or transit has, you know, four wheels and, and drives on our roads is that it's really flexible. And, and the AAA TA has over even this last decade showed a tremendous ability to pivot and adapt to changing demographics, to changing job concentrations, to changing housing supplies. And, and I would absolutely expect that, that the AAA TA, you know, be very aware of this. Fortunately, the areas that we're looking at more specifically in those recommendations, those initial recommendations of areas that city council might consider for, for a T1 district are already some of the most used transit corridors where you have, you know, buses coming frequently, it's 10 miles.
Wonderful. Another question having to do with regional collaboration. For example, Jackson Road moving out towards Syo Township. Are there opportunities for collaboration there? And I, I know Washtenaw was pegged as one of the, the corridors to look at for this because there has been so much collaboration with the Reimagined Washtenaw effort over the years. Is there any conversations with other surrounding townships to align our density goals and transit goals?
I mean, I think absolutely there, there can be. I, I think a, a good model of that is Reimagined Washtenaw. I don't think every member of city council who voted on that in 2014 or 2015 agreed with what the final product was. But I, I think the ability of the county, Pittsfield Township, Ipsy City and Inarbor City to collaborate and work together on long-term planning was fantastic. I do think the end product of that was awesome. It lays out a vision for Washtenaw Avenue that gets buses through Washtenaw faster, gets them off roadways and out of the way of cars more often. And, and creates more walkable, safer spaces for pedestrians and cyclists while moving more commuters through the corridor to decrease congestion for, for local neighborhoods. So I think we have a model for that kind of collaboration. Actually, fortunately, our planning manager happened to be in county at the time and was integral in that. And so has firsthand experience in, in participating in that collaboration. But I think that's certainly on the table. We're not to a point yet where we're ready to say, what's Jackson Avenue going to look like in the future? But we have, we have experience doing exactly that.
Yeah, I'll just add, a lot of even my clients in my professional side have started businesses in Inarbor and they've migrated either a second location or a new business or expanded to, along Jackson for a lot of the reasons of kind of just where there's available space. I, I think it's important to have those conversations, especially in tandem. Those were a lot of conversations when we were looking at the master plan review process and who we're selecting is, who are you talking to as stakeholders? Because talking about people who are just in Inarbor doesn't really take a holistic view of the, what the impact of master planning in Inarbor is. We have to think about how it reacts to everything else. But we can't hang our hats on relying for those other municipalities to follow completely in tandem. So we do have to also just think about what we can actually do in Inarbor with our ordinances, but try to do the collaboration as much as possible.
Great. Another note here asked about partnership with University of Michigan. I know U of M came up about their net student enrollment increases and certainly all the jobs they bring to the community. Are there conversations with them, given they're a major landowner stakeholder along some of these corridors? And other ones we're not necessarily talking about, like Plymouth Road and so on. Has there been communication with them and any enthusiasm to, to partner?
I think there's certainly enthusiasm to partner. And I think, I'm trying to think like too ahead on city council. I feel like every member has asked the University of Michigan to, to step up and be a leader in this regard. The university seems to kind of have a company line, which is, you know, our, our core mission isn't to house students or employees. Our core mission is to cure cancer and educate students and provide, you know, great medical care. And, and, you know, fair enough, but the people, those researchers who, who are, you know, are going to cure cancer, the, the people who are going to serve patients, the people who are going to educate students, need a place to live and, and need to have their quality of life protected. And I think the university does have a bigger role to play. They, they are slowly but surely rolling out their kind of master plan for the next, the next decades. And some of there may be some housing that's included. The only, you know, risk to the university building housing as opposed to private market providing housing is that it's not taxed. And to give you some perspective, And to give you some perspective on what the tax benefit of a private development is, is one of those high rises downtown, 14 story high rise downtown that we've seen prop up in the last 10 years. You know, you can pay over $2 million a year in taxes. And so as we think about our general fund, which is kind of the checking account of the municipal government that pays for a lot of the basic services that we enjoy. The general fund is about $110 million. So $2 million a year in a new development is not insignificant by any means. That's a lot of salary of police officers. That's a lot of potholes. That's a lot of parks getting mowed every summer, even during a recession. So, you know, that's, that's a really important piece to consider as well. So I'd say like lackluster response from the university leadership. And then also some considerations that we don't want to over rely on the university because it has an impact on our ability to provide services in the future.
Question about some stakeholders on South State, Oxford and U of M. We addressed U of M a little bit, are major property owners around the South State Eisenhower area. Have they been engaged? I recall from my own experience in the South State planning effort, I know there was extensive engagement with them, but that's going back a good 10 years. Have people looped back around with them regarding the, the transit supportive district discussion?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. So university has office building down there. A lot of it, they actually lease and one of their biggest landlords is the Oxford Group. So they, Oxford is definitely the largest landlord down there by far. I have had conversations with a couple of representatives from Oxford. One of whom is actually a urban planners master's degree and comes to planning commission from time to time. But he, they, they have expressed that a solution like this, a tool like this is of interest. That the reason that Wolverine Tower and 777 are towers surrounded by asphalt parking lots today is simply because that's what the zoning demands and expects. And if they were given the opportunity to do something more interesting, like, you know, provide housing for the people who work there, create open space and retail space, they absolutely will. I don't know how quickly, but it's something that they definitely have the appetite for.
I think a specific example is that Oxford did bring a resolution about adding restaurants to 10% of office zoning and not impacting the amount of parking required, right? So all of those large buildings down there zone for office can't have restaurants in them. And so that was a resolution that was brought. We then looked at it in planning commission in terms of all office districts, not just, you know, and finding that sweet spot of, we don't want to inundate a bunch of office districts neighboring housing, single family housing neighborhoods with a lot of restaurants, but the larger sized ones, how can you make sure that you've got more mixed use? So that all of those office workers in those buildings aren't getting in their cars to drive downtown for lunch? And that a lot of that ebb and flow is you're either eating, you're working there and you're eating there at the same car. Or for dinner, the people who are working there drove away. And so those parking spaces are available for guests that night. And so it's again, that shared parking resource, but expanding the uses and the diversity of uses. So Oxford already brought that up last year and it's, it's made its way through planning commission. So like those conversations are happening and it's kind of chipping away at different opportunities and creatively thinking about how to use what we have already.
Totally. No, great example, Lisa. And actually it made its way through city council as well. So it's law. And yeah, that's, that's a chip away. And this would be creating a tool that would allow them to do that a little bit more, in a little broader way, which I think could be of benefit to some areas of town. I just quickly, I saw Bruce Fields said that $2 million is total tax, not taxed to the city's general fund. Thank you for the clarification. Absolutely. The city takes about 30% of all of tax bills within the city limits. So it would be about $600,000 a year to the city's coffers. Thanks for the clarification. Sorry for not being clear.
There's a question asked about the affordability angle of this zone in that it is, as it's drafted now, a fairly car light residential sort of district where there's, as proposed, there's no minimum parking requirements for the residential portions of these buildings and, and a maximum number of cars per unit that you can have. Can you talk a little bit about how that creates a potential for more affordable living and what are some, are there any concerns, Lisa, perhaps, that have been expressed on planning commission in your experience in these discussions?
I mean, parking is always loaded. I'll be the first to go on record and say like maximums more than minimums, of course. But I think, like I kind of talked about earlier, the cost of building parking adds to the cost per unit. And so we're talking about affordability, spending $40,000 to $70,000 a parking spot and apart, the dimension of a parking spot being able to be a studio apartment. Like those allocations of financial resources and spatial resources for a car shouldn't be the priority right now. If we can make sure that we're collaborating with the transit systems to make sure that there's something, because we also don't want to put people, like, put supply in islands that people can't navigate through. And so I think it is that all of these things have to be in tandem conversation because if we go to parking maximums instead of minimums, what are the other options that it gives to people? So, yeah, when we talk about affordability as it relates to this, parking is an expensive construction, especially if you have to go underground because we've got height limits, right? You, if we're either killing the streetscape by putting parking at ground floor, which doesn't make for a walkable and vibrant community, we're putting it underground, which we're dealing with stormwater management and costs there, or we're elevating it and we're losing the height that we could put for density for housing. So housing cars is a problem and we need to figure out different ways to move people through the city.
We've got a great bus system. So let's take advantage of it. Yeah, no, Lisa, I think you answered that, that really well. I'll just say one slightly different angle is the fact that even though there's no minimum, that's not to say the parking won't be constructed. Financial institutions who lend money to developers to complete construction, because no developer has enough cash to do that. The, those financial institutions will expect to see parking as part of a developer's plan. And that means that parking will be included. So if you're someone who steadfastly believes that every resident needs a car to get to the grocery store, you know, to some extent, that's going to happen because banks are going to say that has to happen. And that's why putting a maximum is important because the developer can go back to the lending institution and say, it's the local regulation. Like if you want to be part of investing in Ann Arbor, they have this maximum. So be it. And, and, you know, that's important for all the benefits that Lisa mentioned.
You know, we're coming up close to the end of our time. Could, could you, both of you, just recap what specifically the process is for the current, currently drafted T1 proposal? And in specific, Zach, the ordinance that some folks have co-sponsored to ask planning commission to pick this discussion back up again and bring it back to council. So can you just click down the potential timeline that that involves? And if people have feedback to give about what they think this district should, should include or not include, or should the district be limited to the places we've talked about or be more expansive or more narrow? What are the best ways for them to give feedback in the most productive ways?
Absolutely. So thanks, Kirk. And thanks, everyone, for joining, in case we run out of time. The next specific action will be on this Monday, April 6th. City council will be reviewing a resolution. That resolution is giving direction to the planning commission to research and write a potential law that would go on our books that would create one more tool in our toolkit, one more zoning district that could in the future be realized and put into use. So the ask of anyone who feels compelled to write to city council one way or the other, hopefully in favor, hopefully we've swayed you, to city council urging them to, to give planning commission encouragement and space to, to, to offer these recommendations back to city council. So essentially, if passed on Monday night, city council would be saying, hey, this is, you know, a tool in our toolkit that seems like it could be useful in the future. Planning commission, give us your, your best shot at it after a few more opportunities for public dialogue through public hearing. And then at a later date, have our own public hearing and decide if we want to turn into law. Is that clear?
Absolutely. Yeah. And, and Lisa, from your perspective, if, if council on Monday directs planning commission to pick this back, back up again, is there a potential timeline as to when that could get back to city council? So they can look at a finished ordinance and decide if they want to have this option for, for housing?
I'm not, I'm not going to put, I'm not going to commit staff to timelines. I think it's still on here, I think all too. But I mean, it'll go through working sessions, you know, with, with commission. Those all be with public input, probably ordinance review committee before it really comes to the table for, for vote as well. So there'll probably be a few steps at planning commission before it gets back to council. And that's why I say it's going to take time because we want to go through all of these conversations, which is why we should start now. Because it's not trying to rush this through, it's trying to get that runway, get ahead of the runway to be able to really prepare this. So I'm not going to commit any timelines to staff.
That's okay. I think I already did in the resolution. It's mid, mid-July is the goal.
When you're writing in council, you write, write to planning commission. I mean, we get all those correspondences too. And we really do try to even raise them in conversation as well, a lot of those concerns that are addressed. And I think they, they do definitely impact a lot of how, how we view these things because we're each one person.
Yeah, no, totally. And just tangibly, the last time we had a public hearing on this, there were some really constructive ideas that will be implemented in draft two. So like, we're listening. We're in this together.
And just to, just to help out with the communication detail, if, if folks want to give feedback to city council, I think the best way to reach everybody in one shot is just to write citycouncil@atgov.org. And that will go to the mayor and city council. Staff is usually made aware of that feedback too. Planning commission is planning@atgov.org. That goes to planning staff and all the planning commissioners. And I'll, I'll give a little shout out to the, the Facebook group, Anna Rye Yimby. Where if you really wanted to get the weeds, into the weeds of the particulars of an ordinance and ask questions. There's some articles posted in there about the T1 zone as it's currently drafted, which you can, which you can see a, some articles written about that. And as well as we'll post some staff presentations in there. So if you want to get into the finer points, you can really, really dive in. But I think it's incredibly exciting opportunity and as Lisa said, just a tool. This, if this is, if on Monday council directs planning commission to look into this and finish an ordinance, and then it goes back to city council and city council approves it, it becomes a tool. It doesn't rezone anything. It really becomes an option. And at which point a developer can ask to apply it and city council has discretion to approve it or not. So it really is increasing flexibility in a judicious way.
Yep. Awesome. Kirk, thanks for this idea. Lisa, thank you so much for your service to the city and also for taking the time this evening and to everyone who joined. Thank you so much for spending your Friday evening with us. I realize the world isn't normal right now. In some ways, it provides us the space and time to do something like this. And for that, we can be grateful amidst a lot of things that we, that we fear.
This is, I think, I think I see this as being recorded. And I see at least Brian drops some really great links and resources. So is all of that going to get, like this whole thing gets shared to Yimby?
Yeah, great question.
Book anymore. Sorry, everyone.
Brian, can I ask you to email me the links that you've posted, the resources?
We can like save or download this chat, but there's just a lot of other questions and things in there. So I just want to make sure that all of that is archived and covered because I appreciate everyone's participation.
No, that's a good question. So the video is definitely being recorded. I'm going to get it up on YouTube and then post it publicly so, so people can look at it. And then Ryan has already posted stuff in Yimby. And if he wants to email me, awesome. And I'll try to figure out how to document the chat if I can. So, awesome.